You need to do this.
Make sure they can hear us.
I only have my one agenda. Thanks.
It's alright. Oh, we're not.
Just push the thing up first ago. Oh, yeah, those mics are working.
It'll back. I don't like we're gonna have a problem.
Yeah, you guys ready? Yep. Alright, I call to order the Board of Assessors meeting at, uh, it looks like nine thirty-five we're calling.
And read the recorder.
Oh, yes, we are. What are the channels, Nancy?
I just gave.
This meeting is being recorded, videotaped and recorded and will be ready for replay on, what's the channel number?
Uh, no, on YouTube.
On YouTube.
Website.
And.
Alright.
The Dayton website and YouTube and Dayton website. Okay. I'll do a pledge of allegiance. Okay. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mister Chairman, I would like to make a motion to take things out of order. Uh, so my name's here. Last, uh, item number five, I Superintendent Costa and Steve Clement from Select to discuss Bristol Agri Campus Solar Project. Uh, if we could discuss that first to represent this here.
Sure.
Second.
Wish you made a second at all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and Carrie's.
Thank you.
Well, first, thank you. Thank you very much, the Board of Assessors, to take this opportunity to put this onto the agenda. We very much appreciate that and also moving around the agenda documentation in order to be able to take us in today. Um, my name is Derek Costa. I serve as the superintendent of Bristol County Agricultural High School. Been in that position for a little over two months now and four years on the campus as the. So the campus itself, as you can tell, we've gone through a drastic renovation and construction process, project, um, to which that town has been intimately involved throughout the entire process. We thank the town on many occasions, I've done with those, both with the building inspector Jim Agiar and many of the municipal agencies, uh, within the town of Dayton on behalf of the select board who have been actively involved in this entire renovation in the last four years. And I say that with a little bit of a deep breath as we're almost done, right, the finish line of the rest of our punch list items in place. So we, we thank that. Part of the discussion of our campus renovation is the focus on sustainability and sustainable, uh, renewable energy onto the campus. Uh, we focused a lot being our buildings being LEED certified, both gold and silver in multiple facilities that we've had. Um, the purpose of building a campus in that nature obviously intertwines and is woven into the fabric of our education. Uh, many of our programs focused directly on sustainability efforts, both in agriculture and in environmental and environmental engineering that we're, that we have on the campus. So we made an intentional purpose to review the construction of these facilities, um, with having both, um, water reviews, we have systems on campus throughout rooftops. We also have, uh, repaying and generation windows that allows us to have, um, better capabilities for energy efficiencies, multiple toilets in the facility itself. Uh, we haven't, we've done a lot in focusing on sustainability and we want to do more. And that's, that's the purpose of these new projects. Um, in general, at the Abbey, we're looking ahead in the next five to 10 years on what we would like to really give back to our students and understanding with the next direction of sustainability and the efforts that are going to be made in the region. So we, um, what we've done is we've spent some time over the last two years now working with, uh, Select Solar, uh, a private entity in our solar rooftops. Uh, we've selected two facilities that we think we could best maximize on the, uh, on energy efficiencies, uh, one would be our Center for Science and Environment. Uh, the second would be our dairy barn. Uh, both of those facilities are on our north campus, directly down Center Street would be on our left. Um, new facilities that were built, um, for the campus. Um, we find those two facilities as being, uh, particularly the science building, one of the highest energy uh, usage facilities that we have, uh, both with wet and dry labs on the campus. And they're both interconnected with each other, science and, um, our depth of facility and our, and our conference space that we have within the campus itself. So well-used, a lot of energy usage during that period. So we've done due diligence on what it would be to roll back some of the expenses that we have related to electricity for, uh, our facility. And we, we believe that the best direction for us to move into would be able to have, uh, solar array both on the science facility and our dairy barn. The dairy barn itself, production, and I'll, I'll leave a little bit of that to Steve for further discussion on it. But we realized that that building may potentially get into. That's a little. Like usage reduction and some of the savings that we'll have, electricity will offset some of the other buildings on. So in conclusion of the, uh, our point of our discussion of it today, to give a summary, um, of where our project has gone and where we are. We come to the Board of Assessors this time to really discuss, um, our next steps in our agreement with Solar Select. There's a pivotal point where we just need to discuss is, uh, a conversation on a pilot agreement and not having or not having one. And I think that's what's in front of the board. I'll leave it to Steve to have their.
Thank you, Derek. Appreciate it. Um, it's a pleasure to meet everyone, Stephanie, Eric, Nancy, again, I think was a little, maybe a little over a year ago. To remember to meet you as well. As Derek had mentioned, we've been involved with the whole project for, uh, almost two years now. Uh, I actually worked with the architects too to make sure that the building was solar ready so that it would be, you know, not an act of bot. Get going. But there's a lot of things that you go through that process and Nancy, I think you might be familiar with all that. Oh, going through the internet application process with the utility companies and all that. It's just a, it's called the solar poster for a reason. So, uh, but I think we're kind of like on that final swing through. So I'm really excited because it's a beautiful campus. I think you guys have done a great job, Derek, working here. I created a brief presentation and it just kind of highlights some of the things that I thought would be important for you. Um, foremost, I did an update on the electrical usage, uh, by the campus. And you can see it's pretty significant, about two million kilowatt hours. Um, it's up significantly from when we had looked at it maybe a year ago. Um, students coming back, activities are coming into play. Uh, the new buildings are online, there's more usage. So there's things that are really, it was really a lot of, really. So I encapsulated that for you, it's definitely right here. So, um.
We have an extra one.
Oh, okay, thank you. Oh, okay, I got.
I know.
Oh, good. You have an extra here.
Yeah, well, use it. Eric, I gave you one.
Yeah, I'm sharing it with Nancy.
I gave Nancy one too.
No, that was only one. That's alright. I took one from the office. It's alright. We're, we're okay. Yeah, you did. You have an.
So then on the bottom three, I thought to show you what the difference would be that we have submitted the interconnection application with Public Utility National Grid. Um, the Center for Science and the Environment, which is about twenty-two thousand kilowatt hours. When you do that against the campus usage, you're down to about thirteen point five four usage. And if you flip to the next page, you see the new dairy barn. It's a slightly smaller system, four hundred and eight thousand kilowatt hours, approximately. So we're well below, uh, what was the guidance from when Governor Baker did the, uh, Climate Action Bill back in two thousand and twenty-one. And then there were various, uh, letters of information that came out from the Division of Labor or local services, um, that anything that was under one hundred and twenty-five percent of the total usage would be exempt from the pilot. So that's one of the things I wanted to kind of walk through here and get your blessing on because if I not having the pilot allows us to the best PPA rate, the lowest possible PPA rate for the school. So it's all just a matter of, you know, how you balancing that. So we just wanted to kind of highlight that. Um. And I didn't include that on what, uh, the next slide five or something like that. That was the latest movie, uh, January twenty-two. And it is about the aggregate that it would be going to the municipality. I did also, by the way, from your information, I did include just several examples of products we've done in the local communities. For those of you who don't know us, we're the largest solar company here in Massachusetts, what about Hockington? We're a hundred-some-odd people. Um, we focus with a group called Power Options, the National Power Options. But they were actually created on the, uh, government of government well, a long time ago. And they were, when they deregulated electricity, what they did was they bought power from the municipalities. So you as a municipality, you could become a member of Power Options and then it from their buying power because it was like five hundred different towns and cities. And we are the solar providers underneath their PPA contracts. It was very different from a normal company would be that usually, Nancy, you might know, with an escalator that goes with each year, Power Options is a zero percent, which takes. So it's a really, uh, great program. We're very proud to be part of it. And then I showed you some examples in the back of schools that we have done work with. Stonehill obviously is one of the largest. They're about fifty percent of their power consumption challenge by renewable energy. They were maybe about a year ago, the largest. I also have to finish you on slide after that, maybe for the end. You'll see that we did some of that regional, whole district as well down the road. So to give you a sense of some of a, who do we, I think we're up to now over a hundred schools. Um, I just submitted the letter of intent over for the city of Melrose to their elements. I wanted to give you just a background of what we've been doing, uh, the impact study, just so you know, uh, from the interconnection application with National Grid. Originally went into a combined impact study because there's so much demand on the, why is here the infrastructure? Uh, we petitioned them, uh, petition National Grid on behalf of Bristol County Agricultural High School, New York County, together and National Grid then removed us from the combined impact study and put us into an impact study. It's significant because it's not a group, it's not any individual. And we anticipate having a redback in, into this month from now. So we're really excited. Once we get approval, then it's not orchestrated schedule and do things like, you know, and everything we've done this year and, uh, we really appreciate your support in that. So, um, any questions you might have?
Yep, pilot agreements with any of these schools or colleges?
Oh, yeah, yeah, they're, they're, uh, the Power Options Group, uh, had their own Power Options PPA process. And that's a, it was negotiated with them, or at the municipality, and of course, member organizations.
I'm talking about pilot agreements.
Oh, oh, I'm talking about the agreement. It, um, in the past, back, I think before the, the Act of Climate Action underneath, uh, Governor Baker, there might have been a couple of pilot agreements, but typically not. And going forward, we haven't had done any pilot agreements. Because of the coverage on the, if one of the, underneath one hundred and twenty-five percent, that's the crucial thing as I mentioned. I think it was in slide four. And one of the things that had one hundred and twenty-five percent.
Why is that the number?
Because they don't want you to be exporting a lot of power outside of what is being used by the, because then it really starts to impact the grid infrastructure. But they're, they go through that interconnection application process. They're not just looking at the school, they're looking at whatever feeds into those fetal lines, all the way back to essentially. So if you can keep it below a certain level and they said, okay, one hundred and twenty-five percent, then you're fine. In this case with the school, where you can see it's starting using over two million kilowatt hours. We're talking about, you know, maybe, I think it was four hundred and eighty thousand kilowatt hours. So we're well below that threshold.
So how do you pay, how are you assessed for personal property in these communities?
We aren't. We don't, we don't have a pilot agreement.
You don't pay taxes on any of your personal property?
Well, when we do a PPA with the municipality, uh-huh, it's exempt from doing a pilot.
But if you don't, if you don't own the property on which the person, the panels, you don't own the property.
Yeah.
Then it's subject to taxes as personal property. Um, based on the information we've gotten from the Department of Revenue, you don't own the property, you, the company, does not own the property on which the solar panels are going to sit. You, I assume they're leasing it?
Yeah.
So in this lease agreement, is it a cash lease agreement or is it offset by the power, cost of the power? Which one?
Cost of the power.
Yeah, cost of the power.
Okay, so you're leasing property and you've put solar on it. You own the solar panels, they own the property.
Yeah, and they're receiving the power at a discount.
So based on what I have read and what we have been told, going back to when we first met, when Adele was still on board, as long as the power that was being generated was being used on the campus and was not being sold to the grid.
Correct.
There would not be real estate taxes involved because you aren't making and selling a product. What we're still dealing with is we have a bunch of personal property, the whole solar array and everything it's connected to, sitting on property that does, is not owned by the solar company. So to not pay the taxes on it doesn't make sense because the information we had gotten was if you don't own both, it's taxable. Now.
We own, we own the system.
No, no, you don't own the property it's sitting on. So what is the benefit to the town of Dayton? If the property is personal property, it's all I'm talking about is not taxable.
Well, underneath that Division of Labor Services or Local Services that, uh, Division of Local Services, that LFO that was came on the January of twenty-twenty-two. So is it? Right here. Yeah, you can see the break there that it says.
Page you want, please.
I'm on page two. If you go down to. So in general, the exemption of electricity that are capable of producing not more than one hundred and twenty-five percent of the annual electricity needs of the real property upon which they are located, which this is, you know, well below that. And then you can see further on, um, exemption of such system if the capacity that system is capable of producing not more than one hundred and twenty-five percent of annual electricity needs of the real municipality's own property where it sits. And then it further goes on to say, uh, paragraph for one, two, three, where the. Sorry, uh, five, one, two, three, yeah, four. You can see it says actually it includes also the aggregate of energy needs of such property combined, we sold this other own real property within the municipality. I'm sorry, I'm not seeing where.
It's reading.
Yeah, for, if that was further explained, yeah. And based upon this latest ruling, we haven't had to go follow any other municipalities.
Okay, so the, the sticking point is, hey, the very last page, question three. Okay, this, this talks about owning property and all that. It's.
This is valuable.
Um. So again, going back to when we first started discussing this and we looked into it. The information we had gotten was, um, as long as the amount of electricity generated does not exceed what is being used on campus, so on, so on. So the, the property, the leased property would not be taxable. But the exemption relative to the personal property was another issue. I think the only solar farm in this town that I can think of that is owned and everything is owned by, quite frankly, National Grid or a subsidy, subsidiary thereof. Uh, so obviously nothing's being taxed. Um, but, but that's the only one that I'm familiar with. Um, the, uh, the clause that you're talking about, uh, is questionable in this case. Obviously, we, we're going to have to do more research.
Yeah.
Because this is, this is the first time we'd be dealing with a solar farm where, uh, the request is for a complete tax exemption and the, uh, property is not owned and operated by one entity. Okay, you get two parties involved. Um, so.
Bristol County Agricultural High School and Bristol County.
Well, actually, it's Bristol County, the county of Bristol.
Okay.
It's the property owner.
Um, Nancy, can I ask a question? Is it, um, is there a provision in place that has the property is, of course, the county's property that, and the provision of the lease that after a period of X amount of years, the property becomes ours?
You're, you're gonna buy it?
You can, you can purchase the property at the.
Like a lease to own, like a lease to.
Actually, in the contract, Power Options PPA contract, there's three periods you can actually buy others.
If in fact, we started out with, uh, taxing them for the personal property at the point that the county bought the system, I would think it would become tax exempt at that point in time. Uh, so again, and, and this is not new to me. Um, this is dated twenty-two. So, um, that's probably way back when we were first talking about this, when the school was under construction. So, uh, that's the sticking point I have.
Personal property.
Personal property only.
So can I ask this question? So you own the, you own all the panels and everything's.
Yeah, we do everything to.
You own the real estate.
No.
Your own. Yeah, well, I. It's, it's agriculture. Yeah, yes, right. You're not paying for energy because being produced by this.
No, they, we produce the power and then we sell it at a discounted price back to the school.
So you're profiting from panels being on top of that building by selling the energy.
Yeah.
But then you don't want to pay taxes on the panels.
Yeah.
What are you paying taxes on? The energy that being, you're selling, you're paying income tax on all that? But not on the property that generates it.
Yeah.
So if I'm a developer, I'm paying taxes on all the equipment I own to provide a benefit to the community, why is solar not part of that? Why would this solar not be a part of paying taxes on the property that they use to generate income?
Well, we, we have the guidance from the, when Governor Baker signed the Climate Action Bill and then the further guidance from the Division of Labor Services, of which the January two thousand and two is the latest. I think when we first started talking, Nancy, it was back, I think in November, there was another, with the clarification process and that was the final one. So I know that we have not paid pilots or suited pilot. If we do include, if we were to recruit a pilot, basically what happens is the PPA rate goes up to the school because it's a balancing.
So, for example, when you say you could, over a period of time, the, the facility would save X dollars. X dollars over the rate they would pay to whoever their regular power supplier is?
Yeah, they originally were National Grid, uh, who joined Power Options. So now they're taking advantage of their discounted power rate, which is uh, about half of what is currently the rate that everyone else is paying, which is significant savings for the school. Unfortunately, you do have that big spike in, uh, usage. Our rate, the solar rate actually involves both the supply and the delivery service rate, which then that's like thirty-some-odd cents. So it's a significant difference.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Uh, the reason I ask that is because the town of Dayton is part of an aggregation. So, uh, everyone who receives power from National Grid is paying, I believe, right now just a hair under eleven cents a kilowatt hour.
Yes.
Which is substantial savings considering what just happened.
Yeah.
Now, in addition to that, the town of Dayton Municipal Building serviced by National Grid, which eliminates TMLP because they're not part of this. Um, receives an additional penny discount off the aggregation rate through part of a energy savings program that we're in with, uh, Mass Municipal. Uh, so the, uh, as, as is the town of Somerset, as far as aggregation, I don't know if they got into the MMA thing and got out of it or not. Um, but, um, the, getting back to this whole thing again, um, do you have any pilots at all with anybody?
For not that I know of since this act had been, you've gone through with that clarification, there'd been no pilots. I'm doing stuff right now with City Melrose, all that. We have maybe five, six different business development person that, uh, do various contracts.
So.
So, sorry, Nancy.
Yeah, go ahead. Cause I'm thinking about how I'm gonna word this.
Yeah, so you get the benefit of them not being taxed on the equipment on top of the building via an energy break, right? Right? So you pay less for your energy because they're not being taxed on that stuff.
Yeah.
National Grid taxed on all their power equipment that they generate electricity for? Um, I think yes, right? National Grid is generated. If they have a power source, I mean, they pay taxes on that property. They're generating power too.
Yeah, they probably own the land.
Well.
Okay, but, but, but.
They're still, even if they're leasing, if I'm leasing to them, they're paying pet taxes on that property as, as property. Whether it's real estate tax or not, they're paying for it. So why does solar not pay for their equipment? Because they give you a discount. So if we didn't tax National Grid at all for any of their equipment, they could give everybody a better rate.
I think that.
But that's why, there's a, why should solar get the benefit and the other power is not? I don't get that. Like that's, you're using that to generate income. And just because you're giving them a benefit of a lower price doesn't mean you shouldn't be taxed on the equipment. It's, it's a business. You're a for-profit business.
Yeah.
Okay, you're a for-profit business. That's your equipment. That's what you use to make money.
Yeah.
If I'm a builder and I use backhoes, I pay money on backhoes. If I didn't pay taxes on the backhoe, I could give my consumer a better rate. Why is solar doing when getting that benefit?
I'd ask the question and I'm sure Nancy may follow up with it. And review of the provision of what's been put into, into guidance for the DLS and for the.
I'd question, I'd question the thought process behind that too.
That's, unfortunately, we're here today to have that conversation and I guess the, there is, uh, a guidance that is that's been put into place. We're just trying to follow the process of that guidance.
Right, and, and.
That's what we're trying to do.
Right.
We're not asking for anything else besides what's been provided in the guidance that's come from the governor and that's come in clarification from the Department of Federal Services.
Right, and so the, what the, uh, practice of the town of Dayton is relative to solar power, uh, whether it's a pilot agreement or somebody that just says, we don't need a pilot, we're just going to pay our taxes. Um, first of all, the benefit of a pilot agreement for the town of Dayton is once you agree to that, if you don't like the payment schedule, you already agreed to it. So you're not going to the appellate tax board. So that's why Town Council has said, you always get a pilot agreement. Because if you don't and there is an appeal of, of, alright, so the first two years of tax bills are okay. And then the third bill comes out and it's like, whoa, wait a minute, we don't think that's right. Depreciation is not enough. And you end up before the appellate tax board. So that's why the town goes with pilot agreements, uh, for the most part. This is the first pilot, excuse me, this is the first solar project that has come to the town where the property is public property. Um, so in reading those guidelines, um, I find conflicts. And I understand what you're looking at saying, this is what it says, and I'm saying to you, you're right. Now read the rest of it because these are the guidelines that the Board of Assessors have to follow. So that's why I'm saying we need a lot more clarification on this to, to kind of follow up on what Eric said. There is no question about who owns the property. It's municipal, it's, it's tax exempt. However, we have a company who is in business to, um, develop and sell a product. And they're leasing product. And they're leasing property. From a municipal municipal organization. In the process of doing that. The lease payments, I'll call it, for the property is part of the agreement. Relative to the cost of the product, which is electricity, which is going to be sold. And provided to. The owner of the municipal property, okay? Now, I know exemptions exist. If I put panels on my house and in the. The panels produce so much electricity, I don't use it all in my house, I can sell it to the grid and I get credit or whatever. Those are exempt. We know that, I'll call them household, solar is exempt. Um. But the situation that we're dealing with, again, going back to what Eric said. This electricity is being generated. So that by a private company. So that in the sale of that, the production and the sale of that. A profit is made. Obviously, any business in business is there to make a profit. So. The question really is. We don't wanna hurt the school. Or anything like that. And technically, we're all paying. For what's going on over there, including the electric bill, cause we're residents of the county, alright, and we all pay taxes. The situation we're dealing with relative to a private entity. Leasing municipal property, generating a product and selling it at a profit is a hangup. That I see in this whole thing. I know what this says, but. Uh, that's why I'm saying we really need to look into this. Um, I can think of uh. And so it's probably in the training one-on-one course, but I can remember reading about leased property. And how what's how taxes get involved and all that other good stuff, but that was a long time ago. But in any case, um. Prior to her retirement, um. After I had been to some meetings at the Aggie School. I talked to Carol Borogod about this. And she said, from everything I've seen. No real estate taxes, there will be personal property taxes. Now, this is obviously before this agreement that you're talking about. But it was, it would have been after this came out. Now, um. I also had a discussion with uh, Rich Gonzo's. And he's our sort of consultant for tax things. He's a certified assessor and all that other stuff. And his position was the same. So uh, I think as far as the looking into this further uh, as assesses, I think we need to, Carol has since passed. Uh, but we certainly need to talk to Rich and uh. He is experienced, he's certified in this type of stuff. So we would need to follow that up, because I think we're also going to have to explain publicly. Uh, if the whole project is tax exempt. Uh, there are gonna be questions from the public and there may be questions from other developers. We've got, I've lost track, four or five stages of solar farms going on. But they're not municipal properties, but. Uh, obviously, since this is unique and it's the first time we've done it, we've got to be careful on how we proceed with this. The only thing that was even mentioned years ago is the possibility of a solar farm on the landfill. On Tremont Street. And the reason that could shot down was, cause the solar company would not warranty. A cap on the landfill. And without a warranty on that cap. That project went nowhere.
So.
So.
Yeah, I just had one que- hang on a second, Bill. Do you guys do? Panels anywhere but on municipal buildings like schools? Are you only focusing on schools?
No, we do, well, private ownership.
Private. Okay, um, and just to follow to the board. If somebody comes in and builds a new town hall. Are they exempt from paying taxes on the equipment that they use to do that while they're working on that building?
This is specific to solar.
I know, but it's a solar industry. Why should they get the break over everybody else? I don't buy it.
Well.
It's equipment, it's a for-profit business that's using the equipment.
If I may.
Okay, go ahead, Bill.
You know, while you guys have been talking, I've been looking up the law. And um, whether we like it or dislike it, um. There was a law passed and it clearly states that the uh. The property of a uh, electrosolar generating facility. Located on a municipal property that doesn't generate more than a hundred twenty-five percent. Of the needs of that building. So in other words, we didn't want, you know, Bristol Ag.
You're selling it back and making money.
Selling it back and making money.
Right, I get it.
It's not a for-profit venture. Um.
It is a for-profit.
A hundred twenty-five cents, it does.
School's not profiting, they're profiting.
But it specifically says any entity that partners with, that has property on, so it it's very.
Okay.
To me, and I'm not a board.
Alright, so get to the bottom of my note. Does it say we cannot and under any circumstance tax it?
They're exempt.
Period. So why are we here?
It's a, well, I do think we need to have consultation. With our uh, expert and perhaps with DLS, but what I'm saying is that. My layman's reading, and this is a new law. This is not.
Yeah.
This is not some, this happened in January of last year. So this law has only been in place for a year. Um, so.
Yeah, so then why are we to get? Why are we here though? Cause if it's law, as you say, and they state it here, then you don't need us. What are we here for? We're not, we can't assess you anyway. So is this a formality or what exactly is it? I don't, I don't get it. I totally disagree with the law. I think, I think what you guys are doing is making money. And using this as a loophole to do it, but that's not what we're here for. I totally disagree with that. I think that's baloney. And I think that's.
For the record, I agree with you.
I think that's, I think that's a put over on the taxpayer to do that, period. And I think you're wrong for doing it. But it's a law, so we're not here to discuss that. But if we have any recourse, I say they get taxed. If not, then you don't need us. Cause it's a law, so.
But that's something, I would suggest that we simply, you know. Consult with our experts and get the correct opinion. And I I will say if our experts. Say, no, this is, you know, only applies to real estate, you know, we're gonna assess the tax. But I suspect they're gonna say, oh, they're exempt. But that's all we can do. I don't, I agree with you. I don't think we need to talk about it anymore.
Yeah, what's the point of being here? Like if it's a law and we can't do it, then we don't do it. I just think you guys are getting away with it. A lot more than you should.
Um, have you drafted this agreement yet?
The PBA agreement? Yes, we have.
Could we get a copy of that, please? I assume it's a public document? Cause that would be good to give to our uh, consultant.
Sure.
Uh, that clarified. I think the thing is, um. Obviously, this legislation that was passed took care of a lot of stuff because uh, it also got rid of the. The umbrella that the large utilities were under, uh, the the large solar farms uh. That were trying to avoid paying taxes. And ended up before the tax board and uh, turned into a real mess. Uh, but in any case, yeah, um, so I agree with my colleagues, cause on the surface as an assessor. Uh, I have to look at this strictly from a tax thing. And I'm in conflict. Uh, and so I agree.
It's a for-profit business, you should be taxed on the property that you use to make the profit, period. But by law, we're restricted to do that, it seems, which is baloney.
I don't have a problem with the tax for the for the school or whatever you wanna call it, lower rates, whatever. I have a problem with someone who is making a pro- generating a product.
Not paying tax on it.
And because they're able to give you a break. I'm making money on something. Now, everyone's entitled to make money if they're in business, but by the same token. Obviously, every other solar farm in this town.
Should not avoid the taxes.
Yeah.
If I, if I can make a, I think a better, and try to make a better analogy, what if the school had a cafeteria? And the cafeteria is owned and run by Sedexo.
Right, they're taxed.
They're taxed.
They're providing a low-income service for the kids. They get cheap meals.
And even if they're cheap, doesn't matter, they still get taxed, so.
No, I do appreciate, I think you do have a cheap question. Appreciate obviously reviewing the legislative law, but it's the point of Eric of the discussion, I think. There may be some um, concern as to why we're here if it's in law. I mean, I think it's important for us to have these conversations collaboratively with each other, um. For us to be able to do that with one another, we need to collaborate and have these conversations. Prior and forward with any documentation for PPA's in school. We're, we're a partner here with the town.
I get you, I I I get that. And publicly, it should be explained to the people why.
Yeah.
These, this for-profit business isn't gonna have to pay taxes on that.
And so the Aggie is gonna be here long withstanding beyond the twenty years that this project could be in.
Sure.
So we, we wanna work collaboratively with the town and wanna make sure we review all of our due diligence. In this process, regardless of the relationship that we may have with the solar company that we're working with. Our relationship is 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 obviously with the town for many years, it's withstanding to that, so. Out of respect to the Board of Assessors, I think that's why we're here, have this part of the discussion.
And we appreciate that.
Yeah. It applies itself, both in the guidance or in the documentation that's been provided. Uh, most recently, the bill had reviewed for, um, we just wanna make sure that our due diligence is done and respect that.
Yeah, well, I'd agree, and I would just say this, my pushback isn't on the school. For doing what you're doing. I get it, that that's fine. My pushback is there.
Yeah.
I think that's BS, I think this law is BS, period. And I think they're using it to make money.
Can't say that on camera.
It's a BS too, they're just letters. I just think it's BS, that's all. And I think what the solar companies are doing is jaming it down, it's like getting away with murder. They're not paying tax on property that they use to generate income.
And I, you know, moving forward, um, if that's how the legislation has been put into place, um, I think we'll have. Uh, other additional towns in these same circumstances. As they're developing more and more solar projects and arrays on their facilities or farms, et cetera. So I I don't disagree. I I I don't wanna take any more of your time and look like you have a pretty lengthy agenda. I'm happy to stay as long as.
No, we took you first, so you guys can get back to work.
No, I appreciate that. I I think that if we could, uh, and I'm not rushing the town in any way whatsoever, um. We are in a position that we've been waiting for a period of time on our, on our group study. And we're now out of that group study process, intended to do a little study. So we'll hear back pretty quickly from National Grid. Um, we've been having these conversations to get to this point of this beginning today for about a year and a half. So I I do appreciate the time that you'll take with consulting with the individuals that you need to.
I'm just curious, what's the connection with National Grid on this particular thing? Now, you buy power from, they're your supplier.
Yeah.
National Grid. How are they involved in this solar arrangement?
Only Nancy, because when you go through the sources and you have to go to the interconnection application.
Right.
This. The end, the internet study, and then its cost of might come out of that impacts that. There's no, what's up with the PPA? So we're waiting to find out.
Okay.
Is there no additional cost, which I'm hoping?
And you're never gonna have an interconnection with National Grid, cause you're not.
No, they they have to give their approval. End of the day, they have to give their.
I mean, a physical connection, you are not gonna be putting power into their system.
Oh, we're not putting power to their system.
That's my net about solar po- farms we have in town, one of the last things that happens just before the. The certificate, uh, well, actually, certificate of compliance allows them what we say, go live. That's when they flip the switch and that power is going to National Grid. But so when, when I hear you say these terms, I think about solar farms, so. In effect, National Grid is involved, but the last thing that happens is you don't flip the switch and send power.
You're still connected to the grid. All these buildings are all.
Oh, obviously, because you can't generate enough to do everything.
All the power being consumed by the school buildings.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so we, the interconnection process in each study in general gives the opportunity for National Grids, correct or wrong. To look at the infrastructure that currently exists in school, regardless if it's being new during the construction project. And 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 you may know, uh, there was a big battery project with National Grid or something called New Leaf used to be Borrego. And they're the ones that kind of captured all their capacity.
Yeah, we're still dealing with them.
Yeah.
You can have, you're not gonna have battery storage.
No. So they.
Not right now.
Wise decision.
Not right now.
Well, batteries right now are not.
Ready.
That stage for the, for the buildings, they're big, they're okay for the. Big utilities, but not right now. So it is.
So uh, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we instruct Stephanie to uh. Get advice from Mr. Gonzo's and from DLS to see if. The solar project as presented uh, is exempt under. Uh, chapter five. Section five of chapter fifty-nine. Clause forty-five.
Cause I did not write it all down.
I'll say it again.
Okay.
Chapter five. Chapter fifty-nine. Uh, clause forty-five. Yes, it is that hard to find. Um.
Is that it?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Well, she made a second and a discussion.
Yeah, we would like a copy of that agreement if you could get it to Stephanie, so that when she uh, gets in touch with Mr. Gonzo's. They'll have that document.
Perfect. The withstanding note, it understands that it's currently not written with any pilot agreement documentation.
Exactly, whatever, whatever.
Whatever you have, yeah, whatever.
In place.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright.
Yep.
Well, she made a second and all those in favor. Alright, hi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I I am kinda curious, though. You use all that electricity on, is that like? Labs or something? What? It's massive amount.
Exactly, we look at the section slide, I think, to show the breakdown of electric bills. Um. What I found is a single of the dairy barn usage right up, and that's only for. That's only nine months.
Yeah, but that's.
It's robotic.
It's, it's all, I was gonna say, it's all electric cow barn now.
Except for the cows, no people in there?
Was it heat? Is that what, what is?
No, the robotic mil- the robotic milking station at this point in time continues to milk uh, on a twenty-four-seven operation. So it allows them.
So it's robotic.
It is, yeah. It allows them to be able to come in and out of the facility itself.
Your largest one is CSE, what is CSE?
So that's the center for science in the environment.
Yeah, and that's interconnected with two buildings. That's called the science building and the student college.
And and what do you have?
You mentioned water over there. Are you guys renewing your water?
Oh, we will.
Renew, you have a water renewal system over there?
There's a system that's coming off of the rooftop, so we have a water rain collection.
Oh, I see rain collection.
Yeah, that goes into a system that feeds the north campus' irrigation.
Okay, because I know somewhere is in Vermont. Purifying the water, some areas in Vermont, they have problems with water. So say ski areas.
Yeah.
Or everything except from the toilets goes into a system like that cleans it.
Yeah.
And regenerates.
No.
So they're not using any new water other than for the toilets.
You know, we're using our.
But that's ag, my kids.
Yeah, that's not, that's pretty smart. You guys still working on the river too?
Be curious.
You guys start testing on the river?
Yeah.
Will be.
I'd be interested in that.
Yeah, fountain watershed is working directly with PCF.
Cool.
Yeah, let's maybe.
Yeah. You guys doing good work over there?
Thank you.
Yes, thanks for coming in.
I'm happy with one hour of the thing.
Agenda.
Okay. You don't want to.
No, thank you.
Okay. Can you give?
Great.
Okay, the hostel building zero.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Here in the.
I mean, my house, I think I average like thirty. And they're doing two thousand.
Alright.
Okay, so let's.
Alright, so let's go. What are we at? Old business?
We're starting to talk.
Yeah, so.
Late land application.
So this was, um.
The one we talked about.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so. This application, this person has never been in chapter before. So having it come in late with the situation. It's never been in chapter before. It's not like this person's been in.
It was.
Uh, I've been in for twenty years and now because of passing, there's gonna be.
Right.
So I, it should still be denied, that's.
Did you, did you check with?
Did we look on the wiggle room? Cause there was another one that.
To the rule, the laws, I did it. I can, but I just don't think. It's necessary.
I thought there was a, um.
Is this the same property we talked about where?
This property, yes.
I don't even think the passing was around this date of. It was like a few months before thing, so it's not like it was happening and the deadline was just missed. I can still look into it, but I don't think that.
So you're saying by the letter of the law, there's no wiggle room regardless of circumstance?
Right, and.
Is the way you read the letter of the law?
And. This property has never been in chapter before, so this would have been putting it in for the first time.
This is a first-time application?
Yes, so.
This wasn't a renewal application.
Taxed market. That's how it's been all along, so.
Taxed market, that's how it's been all along, so it's not gonna be a burden.
Alright, so I see, so similarly, we had had an example where. Property had been in chapter for a long time.
Yes.
There was a passing.
Yes.
The deadline was missed.
Yes.
Didn't approve it because it had been missed.
Correct.
But then when it came up again, we put it back in and they were only taxed for the one year having been out.
Correct.
We didn't roll back five years and that whole thing, cuz their intention was to get it back in.
Correct.
And they had just missed it because it was a debt, so that this is a different circumstance, this is the first time in.
Right.
Gotcha, so one more year of the regular tax rate on that property. You're saying isn't necessarily a burden.
Correct.
And next year, they'll know to hit it on time.
Yes.
Well, they should be more aware of hitting it on time.
There.
And they probably were not aware that this is a hard stop, meaning that date is a pretty hard stop, right? Regardless, I mean, we don't know what they knew, but even if they didn't know it was a hard stop, it's a hard stop.
Do you, do you have a reference of, cuz I'm not seeing.
So I.
Deadline here.
You know, I do kind of agree with that, I I agreed with our. Reason to hold off to see what wiggle room there is, but I think with that explanation, Stephanie.
Yes.
I think.
Alright, so they missed the deadline for this year, so.
Can we accept?
Can they just turn around and file down for next year? Or do you have to wait for a certain period of time in in this year to file for next year?
And do we have to wait till next year to approve it?
In other words, so if they got it in now, they wouldn't miss it, right?
I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, we don't know, okay.
I mean.
We're not going and undergoing a revaluation.
No. That is, uh, twenty-five, I think.
I still not, I still see nothing here. It says we have no.
Is this one of the January first clauses?
It's October first, not January.
Yeah, that's it, uh, uh, October first.
Oh, alright, okay. There were so many dates and.
I know.
And as I said, uh, some of the stuff that I read way back then.
You have C R S? You have C R S?
No.
I think it.
You know what that means?
Yes, don't say that on camera.
Can't remember stuff.
No, I don't used to say that, as he got older. Now, some stuff that you you read and learn, it stays locked in.
Yep.
Other stuff, you read it, you get through it, you.
So.
Like, like studying, it's college. Pass the test, I'm done.
I'm done, right, right, I agree.
Yes, of the year before.
I had a class.
I did too. I still can't tell you what that class was about.
In that case, it would be a different situation.
And the teacher we had.
Brutal. Which code account?
Uh, I took that course at U M S Dartmouth.
Okay.
Um, so I do understand that I will have to.
Class as the engineer.
Each year, the class keeps the land to continue into the next of the year. I further understand that the land cannot be classified as agricultural or vertical. Land or.
The teacher would not review something, I think the homework deadline was, you'd say, here's the next chapter, do the homework, we'll discuss it next week. So if you didn't understand, you did the homework wrong, and next week you came in, you tell you did it wrong. He didn't do an introduction first, that was his method of teaching.
You get the lesson after you did the work.
I'm not finding anything.
He did the.
Life's kinda like.
It's like. But the thing was.
I'll look more into it, but I think if the exception wasn't made.
He explains.
To, like Eric was discussing, previous person.
So we had the same thing come up, I don't know, I don't remember. He was here, yeah, so we had that one come up and it was literally just missed by a few days.
Just like this one.
And we didn't renew it cuz our hands were tied.
That's it.
Well, that's what I'm.
And it had to roll out for one year and then there, and we made the exception of not going back all five years because their intent was to. Not develop it, not keep it out for whatever other reason, their intent was to put it back in, so they, but they did pay full tax on it one year. For all that property. You know, so. And there was a death in that family too, and it was right around exact same time, the applications were coming in, and by the way, like all the other applications. By the person submitting them were on time, like, cuz there was other property that that family had that did make it in time, that one just didn't. It was just an oversight, but we had to pull that parcel out because we didn't have wiggle room.
But I I'd like to say as a matter of policy or matter of, you know, how we react to said.
Sure.
If I feel something was done wrong in the past.
Yep.
That doesn't mean that.
We should do it wrong, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, I get it.
So so respectfully, I'm saying that I don't agree that if something is, you know, a couple of days late or something like that, that we should, you know. At the heart.
I will.
Right, so what you're asking is Stephanie call and say, is there any wiggle room on this? Call, who is it?
I I'm pretty sure that's what we said last time.
Yeah, but I.
She told all the law.
I made.
And said, look.
Decision.
Right, so.
By the law.
Okay.
So.
You're not wrong, by the way, Steph. So what I'm saying is Bill is trying to say, alright, do we have wiggle room? I know what the law says, but if there's wiggle room, let's try to find it.
There is.
If there isn't, to make a call.
Um, I mean, honestly, I do remember somewhere in this course.
What do we call, who who actually decides that? Not D L S, right?
Well, I wanna say, if you call D O R, D L S, like. Quite often, you're gonna get, well, we can't advise you, you need to talk to so and so.
Right, well.
They won't give you a straight up.
I have the D L S contact somewhere, give it to me, I'll ask two questions, cuz I got something on the last conversation we just had with them.
Okay.
Alright, so I'll ask both questions at the same time while I'm on the phone. What's the wiggle room, is there any, that sort of thing, so, okay, that's fine, so.
The typical, well, we can't really advise you.
I'll just follow this right until I get the answer.
Well, we'll go to Rich and say, hey, Rich.
Yeah.
One time, cuz they're saying, well, like, like, I'm trying to think who would issue, if you, I wanna say. Um, A G's office, you called for a ruling on open meeting law thing, you really should talk to Town Council about that. You don't make rules, well, what are you there for? You're the one that prosecutes people if they violate it, but you're not given this information.
Cuz they might have to prosecute.
Um, so we'll do it next meeting.
Alright, so.
Okay.
Alright.
Do you know, want a motion on that?
Motion, we hold on one second.
Uh, motion to table, um, the Cronin Act case. Postpone it next week.
Um, second.
Motion made a second and a discussion?
No discussion on it till motion to table.
Oh.
So don't use any acronyms either.
Don't, no acronyms, come on. Uh, okay, motion made a second and all those in favor.
Hi.
Hi. May I make a motion that I can use acronyms?
You do that and I'll go to Terry.
I'll be in big trouble. He's the director of my board. My director.
On the budget, is that?
Yeah, do you have any, do you have papers, cuz I don't know.
I didn't bring them.
Yeah.
Said Stephanie.
Yeah, I didn't bring them because I already handed them in and I don't have them.
Oh, wait a minute.
Oh, Nancy.
Is that what you're looking for?
Nancy on the spot.
Not necessarily.
It was just one item, wasn't it?
Um, it was this equipment repairs and maintenance, five hundred.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that can, that title can be changed. Uh, computers are about five years old now, um, I know some people put in their budget to. I left this the way it is when I handed it in, cuz I didn't have the information, and I needed to hand in the budget the next day, but, um. It can be changed to, you know, um.
Is it service and support also that can be charged to that?
So. If something happens to our computers, that's on us, it's not in a town, I think that was one of the.
Okay, it's on the department.
It's just the department.
Yeah, cuz I had said, well, we have a data processing account, what what does that cover?
Right.
And that's like the whole big.
So this could be changed to, um, you know, worded a little differently where. You know, we could purchase a new computer. Uh, I don't know what you guys wanna do, I mean, I think our computers are from, ones from eighteen, the other two are from nineteen, when we got our new system. In, and went to the new Tyler system.
If a computer literally crashed, died, whatever, and. Somebody looks at it and we say, can you fix it? And they say, gonna cost more to fix it than it is to buy a new one, where would we get that equipment from? Where in our budget?
Um.
Could it be, could the line be, what's it says, right?
Called Equipment Repairs and Maintenance.
Alright, if it said Equipment Repairs slash Replacement, does that work? Which means if, like, the instance I just gave.
Right.
Right.
Then we can use it for that purpose.
Right, I asked Arena if we could work a little different so that.
You got more.
Get a new computer if it died instead of.
Out of that font there, right.
And it sounded like it was fine.
Five hundred doesn't sound like enough to replace.
No, I think it's like eat something, but at least if we had that, we'd be able to.
Offset.
It out of office supplier.
Well, and the other thing too is, um, number one, if a if a computer dies and it can't be repaired. It's gotta be replaced, you can't not have. A person without a computer, number one, but, uh. The other thing is, um. If it's the one that's eight, night, two thousand eighteen, speaking from experience. You don't wanna spend a lot of money on it anyhow, um, I just spent over two hundred dollars to have my, not cuz it died. It needed work, uh, but that's a personal computer, that's a different story.
Well, the software becomes obsolete because everything else advances ahead of the software in your computer, so you gotta update.
Right, right.
Whether it's broken or not, they gotta be updated, it's.
Well, not only this, where this is a municipal thing, you can't do your job without a computer.
Correct.
So.
Alright, so what are we, what are we deciding here, what what, just to rename?
Cuz we haven't really used it, he was looking to get rid of it, so I wanted to ask if there was a way to.
Renew.
That include a new computer.
Right.
Or, cuz we're not gonna repair, there's nothing but our computers in our office. We don't have a printer to repair, and who's gonna repair a printer?
You tied into the big one?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we gotta walk out of the office to.
Yeah.
Except for I I have my little thing printing, but, so we are gonna do that, get a new, um, printer. So I don't know if we can change the name or you still wanna get rid of it, that's whatever you guys decide. If, uh, if we don't have anything in this line and we're able to change it, and like a computer dies, then we'd have to go and ask for. Funds.
You need to transfer from reserve, which requires both board of selectmen and a finance committee meeting.
So that's where we stand.
You can't be down, does, um, and I don't think we have any extra computers lying around.
No.
That we could say, take this one until we can figure this out.
Yeah, so that's. Up to you guys.
The savings graces, if we leave it in and let's change it from, let's call it repair slash replacement. And we don't need it in the next calendar year, it goes, it closes out to free cash. So we haven't spent money that frivolously, so to speak.
Right.
Okay, but I think for planning purposes contingency. Now that I know we get one that's at least four years old, you can't function in that office without a computer, so. It may be, it may be, um, prudent to leave the money in there.
Those valves died before Carol and Lisa had to get a new computer, so.
So who's got the oldest computer?
So where does that put you, Bill? Your concern of even raising the, that line at all?
Two different things that I wanna talk about with this, number one is, I think. Are, if we have computers, they should be on regular maintenance or rotation, something like that. Um, if you are telling me that, I I'm not sure how we budget for computers, but. I don't know if it's like townwide or if it's just our department.
Departments, yeah, they kind of.
If it's if it's under our purview.
Right, in our department.
We should have a policy of saying, but I I have it at Dallas, um, they just give me a new computer, whether I like it or not.
Couple of years, you get it.
Every like, you know, two, three years, so I would think that if a computer is, say, three years old. It should be time, we should be considering replacing it.
Right.
And if that being the case, then that should be a lineup in the budget that says we're going, you know, we're planning to replace this computer.
Yeah, cuz every, every third year, it costs twelve hundred dollars to do it, we need three years to raise, so it's four hundred dollars a year to get to twelve hundred.
Yeah, I agree, I think that's.
So I.
So what I'm saying is, you know, is it's. This is what we're going to use this money for.
Right.
What I don't like is the idea of saying, we're gonna have this budgetary line item just in case. And what Nancy said is what raises all the hair in the back of my neck, is when you say.
Put your head on.
It'll just go. It'll go to free cash.
Right, you're saying we shouldn't raise it in the first place. I get that, I get that, so if we're gonna set a system of using it, then let's set a policy of using it. Now.
I think anything.
Have we ever given that back to free cash, that line item there? I mean, to your question, have we ever given it to free?
I think. I mean, it looks like in twenty-two, we spent twenty-four hundred.
So that was last year.
How much should we budget?
I don't have, this doesn't go out enough to.
Isn't that one line item, what did we spend last year, do we know that?
No.
This, this career.
So we may be using.
The fact that we haven't made provisions. In the current budget, or the one we're working on for the next time. We either need to insert a line for the, the new budget, to do what Bill is talking about. Or if we're not gonna do that, leave this in as a contingency and do it in the next one. To not have some provision, whether it's a contingency in this one, that could close out to free cash. Or a plan that, uh, uh, every, uh, kinda like the police cruises, that they set these schedules.
Right.
Automatically, if they, if the money is there, cuz those are special warrant articles. If the money is there, you replace a cruiser every year or, we even had stagnant schedules, but. To not provide something, when I hear we got computers that are that old.
No, I I agree, but we ended up giving that line item to free cash, then we don't have it next year either.
We don't.
We gave it a free cash.
No, what I'm saying, it would be in the next budget, but we need to either, what I'm saying.
Five hundred this year, five hundred next year, and five hundred third year, and let's say it costs fifteen hundred to get the new.
It does not.
No, no.
Right, no, we haven't raised fifteen hundred and save it, so. Right, no, we haven't raised fifteen hundred and save it. So then.
You're recycling. What I'm saying, to, to.
How does it work?
To deal with what I'm talking about, if you don't budget something, you gotta have contingency.
Right.
Because the thing is, if something happens and there's no contingency, you go to the Board of Selectmen and say, we need a reserve from transfer to replace whoever's computer this time.
Emergency comes up.
The problem with that is it, it takes a while to do it. You need Finance Committee approval and you need Board Selectment approval.
She's down the whole time while we're waiting for the approval.
What I'm saying is, um, we need to do something. If it's not a contingency, then we need to put a line item in this, in this budget that we're proposing to do it. Okay, maybe what we should have is a small amount under Repairs. I don't know, hundred bucks, two hundred, whatever, to cover any equipment in the office that might broke. But maybe we need a line that says, we're gonna replace the two thousand eighteen computer in this budget and plug in a separate line to whatever the number is to buy that, replace that computer instead of just saying, we should plan to do it. Let's do it in this budget, one or the other, but we should do something.
That line to be repair or I, I don't think we're ever gonna need. That sounds good.
Call it what?
Just call it equipment.
Equipment.
No, that indicates that you're buying something. That's why I'm saying Repair slash Replacement gives you options. If something croaks and it can be repaired, you can pay it out of that. If it totally croaks, you can replace it out of that line.
It doesn't croak and this is the year we're gonna get a new computer.
Well, what I'm saying to you is Repair slash Replacement. Come, um, let's say April, let's say in April.
Not replace the whole system.
But let's say it's April and we're doing budget review this year's and we haven't spent the money. Then the question would be, is this the year since we got this money, should we replace that oldest computer now or do we let this roll into free cash and take it out of the next budget? I mean, we're still doing budget management at that point in time for both the year we're in and for the upcoming year. So we've got an option. But again, we need to know what we're gonna be doing for this budget, because this is the next year. Um.
But you got six-year-old computers, so you're due to croak as Nancy says. And you could croak.
Well, your computer.
Your computer is due to croak. So I mean, I think Bill makes a good point, right? Don't raise the money if we don't need it anyway and throw it into free cash, right? Let's not do that. But same time, if it's a necessary line item because something's gonna croak, well, then we should have it in there. And if it's repair, maintenance, whatever best describes the utilization of that line item, let's just call it that. It's repair ma- I, I don't really have.
No, I'm saying.
A problem with it being repair, maintenance, I, I wouldn't have a problem if it was equipment.
I'm saying repair, replace.
Repair, replace, whatever.
Repair slash replacement, which means if, if one.
If something goes, they can replace it out of that fund. And if they need more than that fund.
Fix it and we won't spend it all if they say this thing can't be fixed or this is not worth fixing.
Right.
We have got money and we don't have to go, we got instant money where we can say, get a computer for whoever's broke, all right? We don't have to go through the transfer process because we'll have money available. It has to be contingency.
So where, yeah, we're changing the name.
I'm going to disagree. Um, I'm not gonna change my mind on that.
We should have an upgrade or something.
If you want a new computer, then ask for a new computer, put it in the budget as a new computer. I do not support just putting in a line item just in case.
Okay.
So wait a second, so what, 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 what you're saying is only when we need a new computer, put the line item in there, but we're deciding, we're deciding on the budget now. Right, so you're saying if she needs.
Saying you plan, I, I do believe we should have.
All right, so what you're saying is this, saying annually five hundred, we're gonna put in twelve hundred because we know she needs a new computer and it's this year only that we're putting in twelve hundred.
Next computer isn't, I don't know.
Right, so three years from now, let's say it's three years.
Yeah.
So nothing next year and the year after in that budget, twelve hundred, whatever it is.
Whatever.
In third year for a new computer for somebody else in the year.
I don't think we can go that far out. We need to focus on just this budget because we got one that's eight, two thousand eighteen, we got at least one, how many, two thousand nineteen? All right, so those are.
You're saying use it for a computer right now.
So.
Put five hundred in there and use it.
Well, I'm not sure what kind of computers we use. I mean, I know you can buy a laptop these days for around five hundred bucks.
Excuse me.
So I would.
She got desktop, right? You're using desktop.
Absolutely no problems. You tell me you need a new computer because it's from two thousand and eighteen, which is, you know, in computer world, that's.
Long time.
It might as well be writing with a stone tablet.
So are you comfortable with buying it out of this, out of the budget we're in right now? Not the new budget, the budget we're in right now, because there's money budgeted right now.
Three dollars less.
Rather than let that close out to free cash come June, we don't spend it. Are you comfortable buying that, replacing that two thousand eighteen computer out of the FY twenty?
We're still using it.
Equipment.
We'd have to check with the town account. We'd have to check. Sorry, so you need to check with the town account. Um, to find out in that line, would she object to us buying a computer? All right, and in the new budget, are we gonna budget money for replacement in the new budget because we got two nineteenth's? Now, I'm not saying do both of them.
One would be bought out of the budget we're operating on now, and then the next one would be the budget that we're deciding on here.
And then the following year, if that nine, other nineteen is still alive, would we say, let's replace that one. So in three years, we will have replaced that.
And then after that third year, that doesn't need to be allowed in the budget for a while.
For re- that's right, for replacements.
We don't need to, because we've done one, two, three in three consecutive years, right? Does that make sense?
I, I would think, you know, replacing a computer every three years is fairly appropriate. So if we have three computers, we do one a year.
All right, but we gotta stop the three-year process because the ones we got are old.
Right.
So we gotta get, um, so.
You're gonna have to use the money we've got there now that we're operating on till June. And then we're gonna have to budget that line item there for the new one that goes into next year.
They said something about eight fifty. I don't know, about eight hundred and fifty is what.
So leave it at five hundred and you use three hundred and fifty from somewhere else.
So first of all, you're gonna plan in the town account if she will allow us to buy it out of this year's budget.
Right.
All right, and you can report back to us at the next meeting.
Our next meeting is in a month. I don't know if you guys want to.
Wait that long?
Try to get.
Okay, let's wait, let's deal with the FY twenty-three budget. First question is.
Yes, well, I.
The money, when you're gonna get a, what's it gonna cost to replace it? So you get a number and you send it to town accountants. We want to replace the oldest computer. Uh, the estimate we have buying off the bid list or whatever we buy off of is X. We have enough money in this budget. We want to take five hundred out of this line and we want to take, let's say, two hundred out of something else. Question to her is, will you allow us to do that within the budget? Okay, that takes care of FY twenty-three. So you can let us know if that's gonna fly. I think in the FY twenty-four budget, we need to insert a line for replacement of equipment and whatever the number is you get for replacement.
Make it that number.
Put it in there and then let us know, hey, this is the, let's assume the town accountant says you can do that this year. Then you come back to us and say, okay, we got permission. So we're gonna get that computer, getting rid of the eighteen. Now, in the budget for twenty-four, there's a line item that says replacement of equipment and the amount of money that's budgeted is the amount that we're told we're gonna pay this year to get one. And then we can discuss that because the budget is still in flux for twenty-four. So if that flies, then there's a plan in place that for twenty-five, we already know.
We got one more computer for a month. So, but we have to finalize the budget, right? And that due prior to then. But we can't.
It's.
Very limited then.
But, but the fact of the matter is the budget's incomplete. They got collective bargaining issues that have never been settled.
Right.
Yeah.
And this is something that we, we talked about managing the current budget.
And the first.
The best way to manage the FY twenty-three budgets because of some money there that looks like may not be spent. We also discussed the need to replace equipment three years in a row to get us to the point of the three of them are relatively new. So we're planning ahead for equipment replacement, okay? Um, as opposed to not doing anything, letting the money close out to free cash. And then in the meantime, if something brokes, well, you should have planned on that. So, I mean.
All right, we got it.
I think it's a plan. I think so too. I think, uh.
As usual, in my effort to try to bring down the budget, I think we've raised it.
You should have put the hat on when I told you.
Well, see, the thing is, Bill, your thought process was correct. Don't budget it if you're not gonna use it and then throw it into free cash.
Did you hear what, did you hear what I just said to him?
No.
You don't have that problem with that. Can the hair rise?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. No, I tried to get rid of all my hair.
As opposed to pulling it out, right?
Yeah, no, it gets pulled out already.
So you all said as far as.
I think.
We're good.
We're gonna move quickly here.
How come we're, we're a month apart on the meetings? I looked at the schedule and it doesn't. Somebody going away?
I am going away, but we'll talk about that after. Let's, let's take care of our agenda items here.
Uh-uh.
Oh, evaluations. Let's get to our evaluations.
Okay.
Bill, let me ask you this, so before we get started, where are you at on this? So what we did last year was, it was all public, right? Our three evaluations, individuals, you were here for that.
Set in the audience.
But we didn't really have a lot of time with you.
Right.
Right? So.
It wasn't a full year.
It wasn't a full year. So we kind of like, all right, this is what you can improve on, that sort of thing, right? Where were you at on this? So here's what they asked us was, oh, you guys got a meeting?
No.
All right. What they asked was, we do.
Okay, did your homework?
I did.
You saw my email. What, what, did you understand that process?
So.
They want all of us to be with them individually.
Fight it out.
No, no, they're like, we don't do that.
But, uh, so my, my opinion is as such, I haven't reviewed the details and I would like to maybe hear from Nancy as to what exactly is the difference between the process that Mullen is proposing and the process that Nancy wants to do.
Right.
That being said, um, I believe we are our own independent entity.
Correct.
We make our, so, so nothing personal, Mike.
You're right, that's not, that.
Mike is not our boss.
No.
Okay, he does not tell us what to do.
Correct.
On the other hand, it would be appropriate of us to make every effort to try to accommodate any request he may give to us.
Correct.
Um, so what's the problem is, is what I would say is what is the problem with Mike's process that we have to?
Here's what I think the intent of what Mike is asking.
What's the difference, first of all? And just give me the.
The difference is this, if you go through your review, it's public. She goes through her review, it's public. I go through my review, it's public. They see what each one of us did individually.
Correct.
Not as a board. So for example, if yours is skating, right? They meet with her first, go over it, get a chance to discuss it. See where she's at, you're at, so you get to a point and maybe you say, ah, maybe I was a little harsh on that evaluation and you get a chance to change it. If you think that's fair. If it's real skating, that doesn't go out into the public. What happens is you had a one-on-one, you can have a skating review in private. Then we get together as a board and what is public is our condensed version, right? Our unanimous version, which is basically we add up all the scores, we have.
If I may interrupt you for, for one moment, please, you, you had included the open meeting law, which I've seen before.
We have to review it in public.
This doesn't make sense to me. Doing, we have doing an employee review in public forum.
Correct, that doesn't make sense to me either, but uh, without knowing the nature of the reason of the law, the point is, the only thing we need to go public with is the board's general consensus of her review, not each individual. So if she's not comfortable getting a skating review from you, I would say that shouldn't be out in public.
And do not do our individual reviews in executive session?
Well, we could.
No, not, no.
We could do our individuals.
Well, you don't need an executive session if it's one-on-one, Stephanie in one, Stephanie in one, Stephanie in one.
So you're right, what you said and part of my pull in the other direction is that we did discuss this at our last meeting.
Right.
And our last, last.
Whatever the last meeting was.
And, you know, Nancy presented what we're going to do.
Right.
What we're going, and we decided this course of action.
Correct.
Which was I did my homework and I've got a review for Stephanie.
Correct.
And we were gonna sit here and the three of us were gonna discuss it and go bullet by bullet and create a consolidated. That's what we decided we're going to do. So why?
That's correct. Because I didn't understand that we weren't required to actually do them individually in public. That the only requirement is the condensed version, meaning whatever we come as a consent, the consensus for the three of us, that's what is public. Not the individual. And I think it's to protect the individual from if there is a board member that has a particularly skating review that that's not public because she's still a public figure. People come in and talk to her. Right? So if they see you have a skating report of her and they like you now, they're gonna have maybe potentially a jaded review of her before they even walk in your office. They won't even have their own opinion of Stephanie, right? So that's the intent of it. Now, if she's met with you and she says, yeah, I don't care if people know what Bill's thing is, okay, no problem. She's met with Nancy. She says, I don't care if everybody knows what Nancy has to say about me. Okay, I'm fine with that too. I sit with you and I say, and she says, I don't care. It's, doesn't matter. Well, then it's a point to wait for the consensus. We can do it now and come up with a consensus, just, and really the consensus is add the scores up, divide by three. That's it for each line item. But it prevents us from getting a comment and all that long discussion, right? It just does because I don't think my comments are appropriate for anybody but her.
We know that.
So that's my point. And yes, it makes the process longer here at the table.
Because, okay, I, I get what you're saying.
You see where I'm going with that?
Can I be here with Nancy?
What we did last year, we followed the law and that was the first time we had to do that and we did it in open session. Um, and it wasn't even a year. As a matter of fact, I questioned why we even doing it because I said it's just a mid-year, but anyhow, we had to do it. Um, and when the, when the memo came out, uh, the thing that really upset me was we're gonna do it. Um, and we're gonna turn it in to HR and somebody who doesn't really, would not have participated in any discussion on heard anything, would take three different papers, read them and say,
Hey, what do we think?
Okay, this is what they were saying. This, oh, well, this person doesn't agree with that, but I think these two agree with that. So that's gonna be the consensus. I said timeout, that censorship, number one, we are elected officials. And I, I distinguish between an elected official and appointed committee such as the CONCON, where they get five members. There are people on that committee that have never dealt with an evaluation. Good luck with that. My point was, as elected officials, each of us is entitled to an opinion. Each of us should at an open meeting, do what we did last year and just say, okay, uh, all right, item number one, da, 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 da. Bill says, okay, this is what I wrote and it doesn't have to be like the, okay, all right. So here's the summary, what I wrote, you say yours.
This is what she said last time.
So, right, I objected to it. It was, I don't care whether they like it or not, it was censorship. You don't do that to elected officials. Furthermore, if in the three of us sitting here doing question one, uh, item one, two are pretty close and one is different. I'd say personally, what that reflects is that the consensus was that two people agreed, da, 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 da. However, that other person, there should be a note that just says there was also a comment relative to this. Maybe it's needs improvement. All right, because again, as elected officials, we're responsible to the public. I still believe we can work on this together. We can come up with consensus. Each of us as elected officials will, the public will know and Stephanie will know where we're coming from. I agree with what you said. And I said this when this thing came out because it said, well, if there's a, uh, you can meet individually, if there's something you want to discuss. And my point was, no, wait a minute. If something comes up during the year and there's concern about performance or how something was handled, it should have been addressed then. You don't wait for the end of the year to say, oh, back it went out.
I would agree with that.
All right, so all I'm saying is it's gotta be fair and I think that's what we did.
Correct.
So, so what Nancy's saying, let's just say, for example.
We can do the.
Hold on, let me, let me make a point here is, let's say Nancy and I, we're like really tight butts with Stephanie. Now, she's my sister or something and her daughter or something, right? And, and we're, we're giving glowing reviews.
No.
But she's awful.
No.
And you come up as the single dissenting vote saying, no, she's awful.
But his, his, all right, so here's, here's where I think.
Example, both of those are violation of the conflict of.
I get what you're saying. I get the intent.
You know what I'm saying?
All right, so here's, wait a second, it's true. But here's the other thing. We can as a board, her point is right that we shouldn't leave it to HR to decide what our comments were for Stephanie, period. But how can we, and now this boils down to how do we come up with a consensus? I think the best way to come up with a consensus is add three scores together and divide by three and that's what she gets in that line item.
And the.
That's it. So if I'm a, if I'm a five and you're a two and she's a three, add the three, divide by three and that's her score on that.
How would you accomplish that? We're not doing it in an executive session.
We can do that. I don't mind doing that here, but I'm not reading comments or letting any public know what my personal review was with her. I can tell a number. That's fine because that would come out on, on the consensus, right? So.
So what you're proposing is that we should do the one-on-one, it's the talk about the details.
I also.
Public, we just give a number. Each one of us.
Correct.
Well, if you.
Listen, I'm not gonna prevent you.
Why?
I'm not gonna prevent, that's right, I'm not gonna prevent you from saying, hey Steph, this is why I came up with this. I just gave you the option to do it in private, not in public. You don't have to do that here in this public setting. She doesn't have to hear it here in this public setting. If you wanna do it that way and you wanna do it that way and you wanna do it that way, fine. I don't need to read my comments.
I personally would like to leave this up to her, whether she wants it done in private or public. I, I'll agree with you.
Right, so we can do that. Now, how do we come up with, so I think part of Nancy's discussion of coming up with our consensus is if two of you are at fives and I'm at a three, who wins? Do we go to five? No, I say we go five, five and three is thirteen divided by three and that's what her average score is in there. I mean, that's the only way.
I agree, I agree.
For, for number purposes and that's why, that's why I kinda, and if you look at the categories, right, when you're looking at the description of what a five is, what a four is, what a three is, there's really no bad scores here, right? You're thinking of one as a bad score, but what's a one? Needs improvement. Why is that bad? That's not bad, right? When I'm not going for the highest score, needs improvement. The employee E is not reading the required standards of his or her job. If improvements are not made for the discipline issue. Okay, so needs improvement, it could be. All right, a two, how about this? Developing performance. A two on a scale of one to five is below average. So look at this. The employee is demonstrating effort in learning the essential functions of his or her job or his or her position. The employee is aware of areas for personal improvement and is working towards increasing those. That should not be a two. If they're aware of their weakness in that spot, that's actually a positive because they, and they're working towards getting there. So a two is not a bad grade, maybe one is, right? But a two is not. A two means that they understand where they're at and they understand what their weaknesses are.
That's why he's trying to.
You didn't put a two, so.
She didn't, but we might have.
One of the transition things that has happened with this evaluation. One of the transition things that has happened with this evaluation. Is.
That is not bad though, Steph, and
Yes, it is.
Put out in the public, that makes somebody think that, oh, she's got a two out of five. How could she do that? Because everybody.
The numbers out.
Everybody reaches for the grade. The grade doesn't mean you're doing a lot of good job.
So look.
I don't know what you guys want to do, but.
We're gonna get moving because she's got, we got a long thing.
No, I want to put it. Let me ask Stephanie the question. Do you want us to have individual meetings with you to go over our review?
Wouldn't we have to turn this in? What's the deadline? They requested the twenty-seventh of February. They requested.
They extended it, alright.
Twenty-seventh of February. It didn't say that's.
How? Get on with our lives.
Right, okay.
Well, I don't know, I don't know you enough to to say, I don't know what you're gonna say.
So why don't we just do?
What I'm gonna say. The point is, do you want us, do you want to have a chance in private?
It's okay to say.
To review.
Yes, I want a private meeting with each of you.
I mean.
I felt, put it straight.
I read Nancy's, I was fine with.
Okay, so for me, I'd rather sit with you and talk about it before I put comments down. Because I'm not in your office all the time and some of these are not really unfair of us to ask because they have to be asked. But we need to sit and talk because if you convince me that something's going better than I think I'm seeing, then I'm like, oh wow, I was off on this.
Then what do you do?
Then I would change it and say, I think she's got a handle on this. This, she's doing better than I thought she was.
You each give her a copy of whatever you've written at this point and say, please review it. If you want to meet with me, it's her option. She gets in touch with Bill, says, yeah, I want to meet with you, Bob. She says to Eric, yeah, I want to meet with you. And she says, I don't need to meet with any of you guys. I gave her a copy and said, read it over. Let me know anything you want to discuss. She looked at it and I went off to do some stuff. And when I came back, she gave me, she says, no, she says, we don't have to meet. I said, okay, all right. We can, we can schedule a special meeting just to deal with this evaluation if in fact you want to give her this thing and say, look it over. If you want to meet with me, let me know. We can get this done. We can set a date for a special meeting when we will do this publicly. If in fact you discuss something and like you said, you were you, you were misinformed about something.
No, I just missed it. Yeah, I wasn't even misinformed. I just missed it.
So you have an opportunity to discuss it.
Yeah.
I can tell you this without getting into personalities. When I was a selectman and the first time this was, this form was used, the town administrator did all of the evaluations for people that are non-union, but they're like a department head and they don't work for boards of committees, all right? Uh, then they came to the board of selectmen for review. I knew there were personal problems between the town administrator and two employees. And I looked at them and I went to that person and said, have you met with these employees? No. Have they seen these evaluations? Yes. Are you gonna meet with them to talk about what's in here? No, I said, I urge you strongly to sit down with these two individuals because you and I know you have a problem. This should not be reflected, your prist, excuse me, your personal feelings about these two individuals should not be reflected in how they do their job. So all I'm saying to you, I'm not saying you gotta do it. I'm just telling you that.
Right, we, we understand, so.
And they, and she did. And there was discussion and I gotta tell you, the marks changed a little bit so that both the employee and she were happy and their working relationship was better. Alright.
Right.
There's misinformation.
Kind of why it's sort of, so, or to your so kind of a protection so that if there's something in there that she is not comfortable being aired out in public, we have a chance to address it with her in private. We're not required to disclose our three individual reviews in public. We're not even required to discuss the combined review in public. We're only required. I mean, we're not required to include our discussion, only the final product of that result. So if we, we don't have to discuss this in public. We can come up with the grading system and the comments and then we share that in public, the final product. That's what would go to the public.
Here's, here's.
No, we gotta do that final thing in public. We can't.
We don't. The final.
The fi- no, final consensus is the only thing that needs to go public.
No.
Not the discussion of getting.
No, no, you can't get to the final product without a public meeting because that's the open.
Well, if we gave it to HR, they don't have a public meeting to condense our comments.
That whole thing.
They don't.
So we're not allowing a third party to come in and try to figure out.
Not censorship.
It is.
No, it isn't.
It is when they do it to an elected official. They can do it to anyone's appointed, which I would object to, but that's not the top. My thought is, let's assume both of you at separate times meet with Stephanie and whatever. So now you both have your documents. And we come to the meeting and we say, okay, item number one. What's your score? What's your score? What's your, okay, does anyone wish to comment? Uh, yeah, I, I think she really did a great job on what, okay, fine. So then we have a blank form.
That's not required for the meeting.
That's the consensus form and on that blank.
Our discussion to get to that consensus form is not necessary for public consumption. What is, is the final product.
This were an executive session. We are not allowed to discuss any matters about the town except in a public forum.
No, my point is.
The three of us cannot get together outside of a meeting and discuss Stephanie's.
But here's the process. Okay, then we're not doing this then. So here's the process. We give our individuals to the HR department, which they've requested.
Absolutely.
They give us a final product, then we discuss the final product.
Absolutely not.
That's what was requested by the town. You have a problem, Nancy, go back over there.
Did.
Okay. But they're still holding firm and they're digging their feet in. That's what they're asking to be done.
No.
Yes, they are.
When I went to Mike and he got the emails, he wrote back to me, if you read through it, each committee has their own option on how they're going to do this.
We do have the option, that's my point, but we're not required to do that.
I'm gonna meet with each of you in private. Nancy, I don't need to meet with you.
Okay, so now, now, let me finish what I was gonna propose. All right, we're at a public meeting. The meetings have, individual meetings have taken place. We've each got a document. The three documents have to end up in one document. So there's a blank evaluation form here. So, item number one, we can say, what's your score? I scored this, I scored this, I scored this. If they're all the same number, well, we know what the score is. If they're different numbers, we can average them. If that's okay. You can say, does anyone wish to comment? If no one has a comment.
We can do it that way. You're right.
We move to the next one.
We can do it that way with our final evaluation.
So that's an open public meeting.
Has requested that she meet with us individually to discuss.
Correct.
So I make a motion.
And I wanted to throw that out there for that option.
Like to make a motion that we all choose to meet with Stephanie and individual, go over the individual evaluations. And then in a future meeting, we will discuss the score only.
A second. Motion made in second. Any discussion?
Already had too much.
Already had too much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just want to make it clear, we did, because of the stink I made about this thing of censorship, we were given the option and I'm glad we're going this route. Because as elected officials, I don't see anyone summarizing our thoughts and what we put into this thing.
The reason they wanted that summarized, so we didn't have to meet in public to discuss it.
Let's, let's move on.
That was the point.
Create small work.
I agree, I agree.
Is, okay, where are we? Class at least.
Oh, excuse me, just, um, the meetings are gonna be held. Are we gonna set a special meeting day because we got a deadline? We just have evaluation process.
They requested it by the twenty-seventh. It's necessarily mandatory to be there.
What's the next meeting?
Eight.
March eighth.
March eighth.
We've got some abatements and things we have to go through before, you know, timeframe, we only have so.
So you think we might have a special meeting?
I think we should get together be.
Two weeks.
Yes.
Okay.
I move we get together in two weeks.
So what's the date?
I don't know.
Well, today's the, what, eight?
Today's the eighth.
Twenty-second? Is it the twenty-second?
Yep. You're gonna be around?
That's gonna be a problem. I can do it by phone.
Oh, as long as you're here.
I can do it by phone.
Yeah, that's all you have to do.
Yeah, that's fine.
Uh, special meeting.
Unless the day before or after. You gone that whole week?
You what?
I still have kids in school.
I would rather be at work with my kids.
Nobody watches.
That's very vocal, they know not.
That's, that's like saying at the, the meeting, oh, he's just my husband.
Nancy, now they know that too. Not everyone knew that.
Okay, so, so we got a special meeting, um, that was the motion. Did you make that?
I did make a motion.
Second.
Most, we have a meeting in two weeks.
All right, so the motion is for the special meeting on the twenty-second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Okay, so, uh, this is an MAAO costs?
Yes.
That's fine. I move that we, uh, approve the sixty-five dollar bill for an MAAO oh, twenty-twenty-three virtual winter meeting.
Second.
Motion made a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nancy meeting on the panel?
Now I got a whole bunch of them here.
I've seen the bill too.
Oh, yeah, yes, I know someplace.
I can't return like no.
So next we have motor vehicle abatements. We're gonna twenty-one or twenty-two.
We, um, sign the motor vehicle abatements for twenty-twenty-one. Uh, now, uh, sixty-two dollars and fifty cents and in twenty-twenty-two for one thousand seventy-six dollars and seventy-four cents.
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So these next two are, um, commitments for motor vehicles at the registry. This is the end of the year for twenty-two. So it's probably going from you know, November and December, it might be anyone rents of their vehicle or whatever they did. Two hundred.
Yes, page twenty-one.
Yeah.
Now we definitely gonna be.
Small amounts.
Yeah, because it's only a month or two. This one is the new commitment for this year. For first commitment for twenty-three, it's usually the largest. So it's everyone that, as of January first, their car.
Always love that I recognize the name on the last page. Uh, I move that we sign the, um, it's a warrant. Warrant. Warrant commitments for motor vehicles. Twenty-two in the amount of six thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollars and seventy cents. And twenty-twenty-three in the amount of one million, one hundred and seventy-two dollars. No. One million, one hundred and seventy-three thousand, one hundred and one dollars and fourteen cents.
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those, those big numbers, that was like when I would read the warrants and we were paying the regional school district. That was a separate warrant, always stuck in my throat with, you know, two million, three million, it's like, whoa. And I always say, this is the de-ersetment, folks.
Two, um, we have fiscal year twenty-three, um, real estate exemptions. And then this is the corresponding CPA. Um, this is just anyone that has come in after the bills went out, yeah, to do them individually. Close up to the system. So you saw one of them, they're either ones that you voted on. There's a few in here, I think this one, remember?
I'm, I'm not following what I was at. This is monthly list of real estate exemption.
Yeah, so.
Exemptions.
Yep, so it's the forty-one C, yes, yeah.
So what is this for?
Or they, I'm applying their exemption to their tax bill.
So we're just approving the amount, is that?
Yes, and, um, this one, I know you guys did. Oh, yeah. Um, so this one is one that we did, that you guys approved, remember? We changed it to the eighteen.
Yeah.
And I don't know if this person was.
If he doesn't approve the amount.
Yes. Yes.
And same here.
Yep, that's the CPA because CPA goes off, yes.
I make motion that we sign the real estate exemptions for fiscal year twenty-three in the amount of two thousand six hundred and eighty-three dollars and six cents. That's the same on both. I'm confused.
Um, no, it's, it should be, this, it should be fifty bucks on one and the two, six, three, two on the other, what's the cover sheet?
Why are there two?
Because we had to break out the CPA. CPA, if, if anyone gets a forty-one C.
Alright, let me retract my motion. Make a new motion, uh, that we.
We should say on the cover sheet, what?
We sign the CPA exemption in the amount of fifty dollars and eighty-six cents. And the, um, real estate exemption in the amount of two thousand six hundred thirty-two dollars and twenty cents.
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, this. This is, um, Zero Brook Street, the solar farm, they purchased a lot next to it. So they're gonna keep it in sixty-one B, which we've already had this discussion under information on this. Use the link in the previous owner's name and record it in the solar, the new, the new owner's name. So that's just what this check covers, the releasing and the re-recording.
Motion that we sign the release and re-recording of the, uh, sixty-one B property, Zero Brook Street for twelve point nine acres.
And they had map sixteen, lot twenty-seven.
Map sixteen, lot twenty-seven.
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So since we met the last time, we did a site visit out there, basins failed.
I wanted to talk to you about this, uh, I don't think we can do it.
Okay.
Okay, uh, how about we talk it, you know, when you're going?
Okay, that's fine.
One-on-one.
Yeah. How are they gonna get it, right?
So really, I guess we can.
Engineeringly possible?
Todd is waiting to see the as-built planes from the engineer.
She call you.
He's the guy they hired when the guy died.
Right.
Right.
So, um, we do have on our agenda this item of, um, uh, the warrant for property tax exemption. Um, I'm still in the process of, uh, research and such.
Okay.
I don't think there's anything.
What item is that?
Discuss.
Oh, I'm sorry. This one, Mrs. Ferrera's letter.
Right, okay.
Unless there's something you want to discuss.
I'd have no, no, it's.
Fine, I'm gonna discuss this privately with Stephanie because I'm understand, uh, when this trust comes from. But we don't have to do it in public.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay, so you want to table it?
Just move on.
We don't want Okay.
So we just skip it?
Yeah.
Table it.
Oh.
Table it.
Motion to table.
Uh, second.
Aye, aye. All those in favor, aye.
Okay, so, um, so we already dealt with the solar. So, um, we received, I got a call from, um, the attorney doing EverSource's, our ATB case, and we were supposed to, yesterday, the, the case was supposed to be Zoom, but, um, he called to see if we could do a continuance, because they're still working on the information. So, um, it's September twentieth or later. So this is just the, um, paperwork saying
Yeah, we don't do anything.
No, it's just, it's under correspondence.
Oh, this is, um, the utility?
Yeah, EverSource.
You wanna read it?
I suppose we should read it into the record.
Uh, this is a letter we received from Balkly Richardson, um, I email, um, says, uh, dear so this is going, oh, this is going to, this isn't even to us, we're CC'd on this.
Yeah.
Anyway, so, so this is a letter from the attorney to the appellate tax board. Uh, speaking of the case, uh, concerning EverSource gas. Uh, dear Ms. Brown, I'm writing, writing to request the hearing about reference case, which is currently scheduled for February seventh, twenty-twenty-three, to be continued until September twentieth, twenty-twenty-three, or a date thereafter, as that convenes to the board. The town has sent this request, request for reasons for the question set below. Case involves valuation of regulated utility personal property in the town of Dayton, Massachusetts. The parties need the additional time to evaluate the impact of recent decisions, explore subtle possibilities, and discuss the potential resolution to this case. Thank considerations, request any additional information required at this time, please let me
So that I We job.
So, so, um, I just wanna mention that, um, I heard on the news that they're expecting, uh, rate reductions in natural gas that all went out of sight uh, this winter, and my guess is that's part of that, because they're gonna order through Public Utilities Commission, lower the gas rates. So whoever's in charge of that, whether it's Public Utilities Commission, they're saying to EverSource, something about the supply of gas, there's plenty of gas, and the demand is yada-yada. You, you can now, those rates that you boosted, time to look at lowering, so I'm thinking this is why this is being continued. Because it's now there's a new sheriff in town.
Sheriff, I know, I see.
Okay.
Literally. Literally.
No, that was, oh, public input. I skipped all of that. Um, so minutes, um, I don't have February first completed yet. This is just, um, January eighteenth, the regular minutes and the executive session minutes. So.
Did you guys read these over yet?
Yeah, I've seen it.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve.
No, it took me a minute.
The regular meeting of the January eighteenth and executive session of it says the twenty-eighth, wasn't it the eighteenth?
Twenty-two, yeah.
They're both the eighteenth?
Yeah, the second session and the regular
Alright, so that's just an error on here. They're both, so, motion to approve both the regular session and executive session of January eighteenth, twenty-three minutes. So we don't have these.
Second motion.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Although I will ask to use, get in touch with the, um, districts. Yeah.
About, oh, I'll sign this. Um, about changing it. I did talk to Tina, what this bit, is water and electric.